Okay, we're going to get going here in just a minute. For those here in the council room, please remember to talk into the microphone, especially because we have masks. Please keep your hands and arms inside the vehicle at all times. Mosley, Saunders, mic check.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay.
I am here also.
Just a reminder, Ken, pursuant to ordinance 1000, I do have to see you when you're voting, or at least at some point, at the very least.
Okay, just a minute, just a minute.
No one else can see you, so you don't have to put on your makeup. Just kidding, just kidding.
No, it's just you don't like looking at my ceiling fan, and I have to, I have to turn this to hear it.
Yeah, you can, I don't mind looking at it, no one else can see it, so, just so you know. Okay, I'm going to get ready and go live.
Okay.
All right, it looks like we are live. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the city council for October 19th, 2020. Thank you all for being here. The first order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance, and council member Williams has agreed to lead us in that.
Lord God, we thank you for being able to gather together this evening to do the city's business. We ask that you be with us as we're here. We just ask that you cause us to do your work in your will and make right decisions concerning your people. We ask you, Lord, to keep us safe. We pray for those in uniform, Father, who keep us safe by day and by night, and we ask their blessings on them and protect them as they protect us, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, in protection under God, in principle, for liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Just as a reminder, this is a hybrid meeting pursuant to ordinance 1000, so I've got council member Mosley and council member Saunders here with me on Zoom. I can see them, and we can all hear and communicate with them. So the next order of business is special guests and announcements, and I have a proclamation to read for the Chamber of Commerce, which I will do here, and then we have Ollie Morgan here, president of the chamber this year, to give it to you. Anyway, this is a proclamation declaring the week of October 19th through 23rd as Chamber of Commerce Week here in the city of Monell. The Monell area Chamber of Commerce works with businesses, nonprofits, banks, industry, and merchants to advance the civic, economic, professional, and cultural life of our city. Whereas, the Monell area Chamber of Commerce, founded in 1991, has contributed to the civic and economic life here in Monell for the past 29 years. Whereas, this marks the 29th anniversary of the founding of the Monell area Chamber of Commerce, the city's leading broad-based business organization. Whereas, the Monell area Chamber of Commerce and its members provide citizens with a strong business environment that increases employment, the retail trade in commerce, and industrial growth in order to make the city of Monell a better place to live, work, and do business. And whereas, the Monell area Chamber of Commerce encourages the growth of existing businesses and encourages new businesses to locate here in Monell, acting as a liaison with the city, schools, and the business community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Caleb Norris, proclaim the week of October 19th through October 23rd, 2020, as Chamber of Commerce Week in Monell to acknowledge the numerous benefits and services that the Monell area Chamber of Commerce provides to the businesses and residents in our community. Now I'd ask Ollie Morgan to come on up, and I'll present this to him. In a very socially-distanced manner?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And if you'd like to say something, Ollie, you're free to do so.
Certainly, certainly. Thanks, Mayor, I very much appreciate it. On behalf of the Monell area Chamber of Commerce, I'm happy to accept this, a wonderful gesture from the city and the governor's office. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next order of business is the approval of the minutes of the October 5th regular meeting. Is there any discussion on that matter? Council member Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor, just had one change. On the section discussing ordinance, is it on the top page?
Yeah, right there.
The section discussing ordinance 1016, is it on the top page?
Yeah, right there.
Let's see, the first, second, third, fourth paragraph, second sentence, it just said, "Council member Gardner proposed that the leave could be used after an employee has been on disability for 180 days," and that should be that the proposed leave could not be used after an employee has been on disability for 180 days.
So is that a motion to add the word "non"?
That is correct, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, and this is a motion to amend, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion is amended. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, you've got that, I believe. All right, I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries, thank you. Next order of business is public comment. We have several public comment, I've got a couple cards, I've got one card and one email that'll be read as we're still under the provisions of ordinance 1000, but those are on an agenda item, and so we will get to them at that time. With that, next order of business is financial statement review. Ms. Mathis, the floor is yours.
Thank you, good evening. I'm going to switch to my slide, there we go. All right, we're going to take a look at the September, our financial reports as of September 30th, looking at our general fund revenues, looking at our county millage tax first, we're trending a little bit behind budget year-to-date, $273,000, and the prior year by $11,000. This looks like it's related to the timing of when people are paying their property tax payments, so when they pay the county treasurer, then the county treasurer remits funds to us. Several months so far this year, we're behind the prior year with COVID and everything going on, that's to be expected, but the payment we received in October, that you'll see on the October financial payment, so the check we got this month, will actually put us ahead of the previous year's year-to-date as of the end of October, and then November is typically the second highest payment we receive all year long, because all those taxes were due April, or October 15th. So while we're behind in September, not really concerned about it at this point, I think we're going to catch back up by the end of the year. Looking also at our state turnback funds, got a little bit better explanation here of why we're trending behind budget year-to-date and slightly behind the prior year. The state is on a different fiscal year than we are. So COVID was already underway at the beginning of their fiscal year, and the governor enacted some state-level budget cuts, kind of at the beginning of the year, to kind of be a little bit more conservative in how they were responding and making sure they weren't overspending at the state level. And so one of the things they did was reduce the amount of turnback funds they were sending to municipalities. So we've only been getting since July about 85% of the turnback funds that we typically get. What they're telling us now is the state's forecast for the last four months is higher than they were anticipating, and so they expect to give us 100% of the turnback funds that we receive in their fiscal year. However, we probably won't get them until April, May, and June of 2021, which is towards the end of their fiscal year, it's going to roll into a different year for ours. So we likely will be a little bit behind the end of 2020 this year, but then next spring, we should see coming in a little bit higher than normal on those as they come in towards the end of the state's fiscal year. County sales tax, our September report represents taxes collected in July. We're slightly ahead of budget and $131,000 more than the prior year. You'll see the same thing on the city sales tax, we're $69,000 ahead of budget year-to-date and $235,000 ahead of the prior year, and this also includes six out of the nine months of the reduction in sales received to those audits and local cap rebates that we've been kind of tracking all year long. Just as kind of a side note, the internet sales tax kicked into effect in the fall of last year, and so I think that's a lot of the reason why we're seeing, why we didn't see our sales tax revenues dip so badly this year, which we were kind of worried about with all the closures, it's because that internet sales tax was there, and it was anticipated when that was put into place that it would increase those sales tax revenues for the state and for cities. Our police department reflects $147,000 ahead of budget year-to-date and $384 ahead of the prior year. We talked a little bit about this last month in both the police and fire departments with the lot, the change in how we're recording lot fee turnback fees and those 911 dispatch funds, they had been recorded as kind of some offsetting expenses, and we're now showing full revenue and full expenses on both sides. So you'll see there, the expenses are actually $339,000 ahead of the prior year, and same thing on the fire department. We're ahead of budget year-to-date, we're ahead of the prior year quite a bit, but those expenses are $267,000 more than the prior year as well. Looking at parks, rec, and senior wellness, we've been talking about this all year long, we know they're behind, they're going to be, but their expenses are still behind more than their revenues are, so we're tracking well there. On the expenditure side, looking at our expenses, most departments, we've been talking about this, except Public Works, remain under budget year-to-date. We are finishing up that reclassification between Public Works and Sanitations and Streets this month, so your October financial reports should show all of that corrected for the year. We've gotten that fixed in our payroll system, and just finishing up those adjusting entries. Then, we're looking at our street fund, revenue and expenditures. We're behind budget year-to-date, $555,000, and slightly behind the prior year on those county millage taxes, but that's the same story as we had up in the general fund. We got more in in October, and November's the big month of revenue, so I think we'll catch up there. Our state turnback funds are trending slightly ahead of budget and the prior year, so in the general fund where we talked about state turnback funds that are only paying us 85%, they only did that in the general turnback funds, not in the street fund, so we're getting 100% of our street turnback right now. And our operating expenses are still $117,000 under budget and $64,000 ahead of the prior year. And our sanitation fund, sanitation fees are trending behind budget and slightly behind the prior year. I have a feeling that's a result of some collections this year. We know that the Central Arkansas Water has suspended shut-offs through this pandemic, and they've been working out payment plans with people, and I think there's a letter later in the packet that kind of gives us a status update on where they're at, but what we're seeing here in revenues is only the money collected that they've received, and so I think there's a little bit of a delay in getting some of those funds in as they've worked with people to do payment plans and things like that. That's all I have in slides, but I just kind of wanted to update on the COVID relief fund. We did establish that special revenue fund in August. We are now able to start applying for those funds, and the mayor and I are working on sorting through proposals and working through how best to utilize those funds for the city. We should be seeing, we have to have some of the requests in in the next month, and then they'll be kicking payments back at us pretty quickly after that. So that's a brief overview of September.
Thank you. Council member Scott?
Yeah, thank you, great report. Bottom line, are we having to borrow from capital reserve to fund operating expense?
Not at this time. If you look at page four of the packet, our excess or deficit of revenues over expenditures is $1.6 million year-to-date, but we were budgeted to be $2.7 million. We had allocated to do that, and a lot of that was the match that we committed for the FEMA grant, so when we moved that over into its own fund, we took that allocation and moved it out.
Okay, so we're still okay?
Yeah, we're, if you look at that budget year-to-date column, we're, if we look at a 12-month spread on a budget, we should have been about $2.4 million deficit, and we're at about a 1.6, so we're trending ahead of where we should be.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Vapurzain?
My question was a revenue over expenditure question.
Okay.
I feel like I'm on Match Game, there it is.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion on this issue, I'd entertain a motion to accept the financials. We've got a motion and a second to accept the financials. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. The next order of business is a procedural motion. I entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. We have a motion and a second to have all ordinances read by title only, is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to unfinished business, the first order of business is the third reading of ordinance 1003. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Monell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1003, and ordinance amending the compensation schedule for the elected position of mayor of the city of Monell and for other purposes.
Thank you. This is on third reading, is there any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, council member Vapurzain?
I just want to make a quick point with all these potential raises. I totaled it up, and, because at first I was like, well, if we're not doing well financially, is this something that we want to do, invest in at this time? The total with everybody's compensation going up is $23,803, very much, and I think definitely our elected officials are worthy of being at least in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we lost our live feed, so I'm trying to quickly get that sorted out. I guess sure everything was working. Okay, the show must go on. I'll continue to play with it as we go on, but we've lost the live feed, so there's that. We do have it recorded, several different recordings that I'm sure Rachel will have a ton of fun splicing together, but anyways. So pardon me, where were we? And, and thank you, we had a motion, who made the motion was council member Scott, and then the second was Gardner. Was there any additional discussion on that motion?
Yes, I've got something.
Council member Mosley?
Yes, sir, I wanted to say, I checked with Jeff Van Patton, he did one final check on all the salaries and the ordinances, and said they were accurate, so we've got good numbers, and I'm kind of with council member Vapurzain, I feel like we're probably as good a place as we could be to go ahead and implement these things, so I'm probably a yes vote tonight, thank you.
All right. Council member Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with council member representative, it just seems like that we're a little bit ahead of our time. I have greatest respect for all of our elected officials, but if we could wait until after budget and sort of get closer to see what we're expecting, they won't go into effect until the 1st of January, is that correct, the raises?
Yes, sir.
So they are not immediate anyway. It, you know, in my household, I'm locking down all the walls to make certain that, I just think we're really looking at a very, very uncertain months ahead of us for the time being, and I don't wish anyone ill, and I hate to be negative about things like this, but I just wish that we, there was some way we could agree to delay it a little later and come back and have another look at it after budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council member Tierney?
Yes, as you know, we originally looked at these recommendations back in February, and the goal here is to, you know, keep us basically at the middle of that, we're not really going to be bumping anybody up to the top tier. In some cases, right now, we have people being paid at the lower range of all of our sister cities and competitors, and so I just want to point out this is just going to keep us in the middle of the road here.
Thank you, council member Tierney. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, madam city clerk, roll call vote, please.
Council member Mosley?
Yes.
Council member Saunders?
Yes.
Council member Scott?
Yes.
Council member Gardner?
Yes.
Council member Williams?
Yes.
Council member Tierney?
Yes.
Council member Vapurzain?
Yes.
Council member Holt?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance passes. Next order of business is the third reading of ordinance 1004, amending a compensation schedule. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Monell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1004, and ordinance amending the compensation schedule for the elected position of the city clerk treasurer of the city of Monell.
All right, this is on third reading, is there any additional discussion at this time? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1003. We have a motion and a, am I reading the wrong one? Pardon me, the, looking for a motion to adopt ordinance 1004? I, we weren't talking about it, I read 1003. I think everyone in their whole family is sending me text messages letting me know the feed has dropped. So yes, we have a motion and a second adopting ordinance 1004, amending a compensation schedule. Who was the second on that? Council member Vapurzain? Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, madam city clerk, roll call vote, please.
Council member Holt?
Yes.
Council member Vapurzain? Council member Tierney?
Yes.
Council member Williams? Council member Gardner?
Yes.
Council member Scott?
Yes.
Council member Saunders?
Yes.
Council member Mosley?
Yes.
All right, ordinance passes. The next order of business is the third reading of ordinance 1005, amending a compensation schedule. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Monell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1005, and ordinance amending the compensation schedule for the elected position of city attorney of the city of Monell and for other purposes.
We've got a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1005. Is there any additional discussion on that motion? Seeing none, madam city clerk, roll call vote, please.
Council member Holt?
Yes.
Council member Vapurzain?
Yes.
Council member Tierney?
Yes.
Council member Williams?
Yes.
Council member Gardner?
Yes.
Council member Scott?
Yes.
Council member Saunders?
I believe you're muted, council member Saunders?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you, and council member Mosley?
Yes, ma'am.
Ordinance passes unanimously.
Thank you. Ordinance passes. I believe we are now on ordinance 1006, amending a compensation schedule. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Monell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1006, and ordinance amending the compensation schedule for the elected position of the city council member of the city of Monell and for other purposes.
We have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, madam city clerk, roll call vote, please.
Council member Holt?
Yes.
Council member Vapurzain?
Yes.
Council member Tierney?
Yes.
Council member Williams?
Yes.
Council member Gardner?
Yes.
Council member Scott?
Yes.
Council member Saunders?
Yes.
Council member Mosley?
Yes.
Ordinance 1006 passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next order of business is the first reading of ordinance 1016 regarding catastrophic leave. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Monell, Plaski County, Arkansas, ordinance number 1016, an ordinance of the city of Monell, Arkansas, adopting provisions for the programs in compliance with the Arkansas Uniform Catastrophic Leave Program.
Thank you. So this has been amended based on input from the council, and it is on first reading. Is there any discussion at this time? All right, it'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting. Next order of business is the first reading of ordinance 1015, clarifying actions considered a nuisance. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Monell, county of Plaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1015, and ordinance clarifying the actions to be considered a nuisance pursuant to chapter 38 of the Monell City Code, providing certain exceptions and for other purposes.
Thank you. This is back on first reading as amended. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Yes, there is. First up, we are still in ordinance 1000 territory, which is the virtual meeting, and we have a public comment card that was submitted. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that?
This public comment card was submitted by James Higgins, 501 Arnold Palmer Drive, Monell, Arkansas. Dear Mayor Norris, I have concerns related to the discussion of ordinance 1015- 1015 and would appreciate their consideration, referring to the council. The council packet includes ordinance 1015, which addresses generally loud or raucous noises. I note section two, subsection F6 specifically exempts from the ordinance noise emanating from the commercial or industrial activity with a valid city permit in commercial or industrial zone. I presume a valid city permit means an appropriate business license. If one has recently visited our nearby Walmart, one would be aware of the site's new parking lot, loudspeakers, broadcasting music, and business messages. While I am aware of no commercial property in Mammell projecting similar commercial messaging in its parking lot, what in ordinance 1015 would prevent such from happening? As the ordinance says 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM quiet time, section E only applies to residential locations, how would the ordinance be useful in restricting music, advertising, or other noise emanating from commercial site which is adjacent to the residential properties between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM? Respectfully, James Higgins.
Thank you. Just, uh, thank you. Just a reminder, uh, ordinance 1,000 said as long as we're meeting in, in, uh, virtual meetings that, um, residents can submit, um, a comment card on an agenda on item, on the, uh, on item on the agenda. Uh, so that was that. Another public comment card from Mr. Billy Profit. Come on down. You're the next contestant.
I am the next contestant. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
If you could state your name and address for the record.
Billy Profit, 13 Crestview Court, Mammell, Arkansas, representing the Mammell Country Club at 100 Club Manor. Pandemic has caused a lot of problems for small businesses. We all know that. Um, we've moved things around so many times at the country club that it's maddening. I've actually started getting close to shaving my head. It's that bad. But we tend to and always will be a good neighbor to the city. On, uh, August 1st of this year, we had a four-ball annual tournament, which is usually held in May inside the building. Uh, it's a great revenue-driven type party, which is consists of a lot of golfers, a lot of things happening afterwards, a little party. Uh, it got loud. We ran to 10:42 before I shut it down. I've already talked to everybody that reached out to me that, that had compliments or complaints about it. Uh, over and done. It wouldn't be an issue for the country club whatsoever if it wasn't a COVID. It would be inside the clubhouse. There would be no discussion on it. Uh, as far as changing times to 10 from 10:30 or whatever the ordinance was before, and then using property lines versus decimals, kind of runs into a little tricky situation for me. I have 250 acres. I have property lines all over the place. Normally, once or twice a year, we might have an outside event. Might. Normally, we'll do it on the back nine, facing the river, and really the property line is a swamp. I don't know who's going to go out there and measure it. But overall, what it comes down to is, I don't think the issue is something to deal with right now because of the pandemic. I'm not going to cause ruckus. I'm part of this community. Been here a decade. And the last thing I want to do is upset people. But I also understand I can't make everybody happy. Um, so the country club's view on this is, let's really think about it before we really do something about it. Uh, if there's a forum or committee or something, I'd be more than happy to lend my time to be a part of something like that. But that's kind of the country club's view on this whole ordinance. Thank you. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Profit. Uh, with that, um, is there any additional, uh, discussion on ordinance 1015?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I was, I was wondering if, uh, you could, you or the city attorney could comment on, uh, Mr. Higgins', uh, uh, question there. How, how, uh, how would something like that apply as far as a, uh, parking lot with music and that sort of thing? Would that law apply to a commercial, uh, playing music like that? Or, or like the, uh, I think we've got a car wash that plays music at night?
Madam City Attorney?
Uh, that's something that probably could be clarified a little bit more by amendment. Um, what it specifically says is noise emanating from commercial or industrial activity with a valid city permit in a commercial or industrial zone. I, I'm, I would argue that just the music playing after those hours is not necessarily part of the commercial or industrial activity. It's not a necessity in order to have people coming and going from a store and purchasing items. It's not a necessity in order to get your car washed. Um, so that particular type of activity in conjunction with, uh, commercial use, I guess it's a little bit of a gray area. Um, but I would argue that that's not actually part of that particular commercial act or industrial activity. Now, if it's...
So it, it, so it could be something that would be cited even though they're not a residential?
I think it would be something that we would attempt to address with the business owner first. And then I think it is a possibility that it could be cited if it's not part of the actual commercial or industrial activity taking place there.
Would, would you recommend an amendment to deal with this, or would you rather not?
Um, I, I, I'm trying to think through what the best way to amend it would be. Um, and it, it might be to include something along the lines of it being related to the activity being conducted. Because I mean, if you have a, a place that's approved to have live music indoors and it makes some noise that neighbors can hear, that's going to be, you know, that is part of their activity. That's their business activity and that's their service that they're providing.
Right.
Um, so we just need to be careful how we word any of them.
Okay, but, uh, uh, could we, uh, do an amendment, something like, uh, if, if it's noise not related to a business activity that's been approved? It would, uh, or is it better to just, uh, live with the way it is and, and just, uh, go ahead and, and sign that they're, they're not interested in turning down the music?
All right. Well, okay, it's worded noise emanating from commercial or industrial activities. Are you saying and related to that activity?
Yeah, say, say if we end up with a, a neighborhood market or something like that and they, or, or just, just a, a business that decides they want to play music, uh, 24 hours a day in their parking lot, uh, it doesn't have anything to do with their, their business, uh, activity. Uh, how, how best to deal with that?
Well, you could, you could amend it to be no, noise emanate, emanating from commercial or industrial activity and required for the approved activity, comma, with a valid city permit in a commercial or industrial zone. If you want to limit it to, um, the actual noise that's required for their activity.
Yeah. I would, I would like to, I'd, I'd like to make a motion when we admit it to do that. Um, what you said, uh, make a motion that we do that.
We're going to call that the Chad Gardner technique.
All right. We have, we have a motion on, uh, could you reset what the, the motion would be, Madam City Attorney?
I hope so. All right. Noise, so it, this would be an amendment to, um, F6, so that that section would read noise emanating from commercial or industrial activity, comma, and required for the approved activity, comma, with a valid city permit in a commercial or industrial zone.
Certainly do.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to add the phrase and required for the approved activity in subsection F6 of ordinance 1015. Do we have a second on that? Seconded by Councilmember Holt. Um, is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Scott, I have you in queue as that for, okay. Thank you. All right, then, um,
Did they amend it? I believe we do, roll call.
Madam City Clerk, if you could please, uh, do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Vapurzhan?
No.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Gardner?
No.
Councilmember Scott? Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
So I understand that to be 4-4, I will choose to vote in the affirmative. Yes. So motion passes and is amended. The phrase and required for the approved activity is added to subsection F6 of ordinance 1015. Now, is there, now is there any discussion? Councilmember Scott?
Oh, um, I just wanted to say, I didn't think the country club was included. Are they considered residential?
They're open space.
I'm sorry? Open space?
They're open space.
So it's not commercial or industrial?
It is not commercial or industrial.
Okay. That's all I wanted to, thank you.
Thank you. So my question now is, Madam, uh, City Attorney, uh, will this reset it to first reading?
I would, I believe, I believe that is a substantive change and it would reset it.
Okay. Uh, with the council's permission, um, I'd request, uh, the first reading this evening. Um, Madam City Clerk, if you could please read ordinance number 1015 by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1015, an ordinance clarifying the actions to be considered as a nuisance pursuant to chapter 38 of the Mammell City Code, providing certain exceptions and for other purposes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting. The next order of business is the second reading of ordinance 1017, amending a master street plan. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1017, an ordinance amending the master street plan map for the City of Mammell, Arkansas, to downgrade to the classification of a specific section of proposed Mammell Valley Drive in Phase 19 of Mammell Valley Estates Edition from a collector to a local street and for other purposes.
Thank you. So this is on second reading. This is, um, well, the title said it all. So I won't repeat. Is there any discussion on this issue? At the, uh, last, um, council meeting, a gentleman asked for a crime study, the police, or crime analysis between Mammell Valley and Osage. I got that. Um, I can, I can send it all out to you, uh, and will include in the next council packet there. Pretty, pretty similar, um, on those. Uh, and then I believe we, you're doing a speed study currently, Mr. Hogan. Is that correct? We've got the speed strips out and all that. If you don't mind, please come on down.
Um, we got the speed study up today, having problems.
Up today?
Yeah, we pulled it up today to get the information off of it.
Oh, you, you're, you're done with the study now?
We're done with the study, but having issues, uh, getting the information off of it. So, uh, do some, due to some technical difficulties.
I would know nothing about technical difficulties.
We'll try and get it, uh, pull it off there and, and hopefully get it to you soon.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
So we will include that information, uh, in the council packet, uh, going forward. Councilmember Holt?
Um, you know, what, what ward is this particular item in? Is this ward three or ward, ward two?
Ward two. Yes, sir.
In a way, for me, this is very much like the situation with the country club. But I went out there and course that is, that's an item that is isolated to that particular ward. And for a council member in ward four, on the other side of town, it doesn't affect me or the people in ward four at all, or ward one, and I guess in ward three. Somehow another, I wish the council could have a situation where something like this was handled by the people that it affects in that ward, uh, rather than have me, the, the people that we've heard speak have been unanimously against it. I have no reason not to vote for it. I, I, it's a complete indifference to me. But it doesn't affect me. It affects the people who live there. It's their neighborhood. And I, I hate to have to vote and say yes, that it was going to go through when I don't live there. So it's just my opinion. I, uh, if I go ahead and vote no, then it's because I just would rather let the people who live there make their own decision and, and narrow it down. I wish we had an ordinance that could say the, the council can fix an ordinance where it is a zone decision and let them take care of it and, uh, uh, people that it doesn't affect not have to be burdened with, or not burdened, but, but have to make a vote against the people's wishes. So that's
the way I feel about it. I just thought I, I want to put that in.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt. Councilmember Scott?
Uh, I was wondering exactly where the speed study was. Where were the strips? Thank you.
I think they were somewhere between Cherokee and Navajo.
Right on Manitowoc Hill?
Yes. I'm pretty sure of that. I'm, I'm not positive. I, I wasn't the one that set it up, but I think that's where.
I didn't, I didn't see them, but I did probably go up high enough.
Okay.
We'll include that address, uh, on this speed study.
Okay. I was, I was just curious.
Is there any additional comments or discussion at this time? All right. This will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. Moving on to new business, the first order of new business is resolution 2020-27, amending the 2020 general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, treasure, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2020-27, a resolution to amend the 2020 general fund budget.
I've got a motion to approve and a second. Really briefly, I think this is fairly self-explanatory. This, uh, resolution doesn't, uh, uh, take any money out of reserves. It's just moving it from capital, uh, to operating. We previously moved it from operating to capital. Um, and so, yeah. Um, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next order of business, uh, is, uh, discussion point for the deputy city clerk salary. Um, Madam City Clerk, what's going on?
Okay, so, um, you guys know that that position, it currently remains unfilled. I do have money in my budget, so I would like to offer an additional dollar, um, to that position. It would not require a budget resolution because I currently have the funds. And I, I just, this has come about because minimum wage, uh, will be moving to $11 per hour in just a matter of months. And I'm hoping this additional, it's actually 98 cents, um, that I would like to add, uh, will help attract someone that, um, would benefit, um, the office and, and that.
Thank you. So again, we have the money in the budget. This doesn't require, um, a, a budget amendment. Uh, however, what it would mean is that when we saw y'all during the budget time, if, if the city clerk offers that extra dollar, it is essentially obligating the city council to either approve it or fire that person and hire someone at lower wage. And it's my personal practice to, uh, come to y'all and, and, and get y'all's thoughts on that before I, you know, bind the council on that issue. Um, Councilmember Scott?
So I'm kind of understanding that, uh, by not adding that 98 cents an hour and in the very near future, that position would be paid under... in the very near future, that position would be paid under minimum wage?
Well, it's eleven sixty-seven, so it's not under, but it's very close.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I was wondering how much, what is, what is the pay right now, and, and is it a full-time thing?
The current pay is eleven dollars and sixty-six cents, and yes, it's a full-time position with full benefits. The minimum wage rate will go to eleven dollars, so that means, as it stands, it would be sixty-six cents more than minimum wage.
Okay, okay.
So periodically, we get.
I'm all.
Pardon me, Councilmember.
I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of the question.
Pardon, pardon me?
He was in favor.
Okay. General thoughts, I don't think we need a, a, a motion, Councilmember Vaffrazan?
I'm in agreement, I'd like to go to program, push a card, and we, we, we have some highly skilled and talented people here. I appreciate when we, everybody appreciates when they get taken care of, and get to work in such a lovely environment as well.
Thank you.
We hear that a lot, well, I can go to Walmart, or I can go, so we're trying to be somewhat competitive as much as.
More responsible, we can go to Walmart.
Hey, as somebody who was a lot attendant for like a week shy of a year at Home Depot, I was up there in difficult jobs that I've had. All right, thank you, it doesn't sound like anyone has any heartburn, I just wanted to run this past y'all before we got to a budget period. All right, we'll move on to, that concludes new business, we'll move on to mayor's comments. I included in the council packet information related to issue one. Issue one is the extension of the sales tax that goes to streets and roads. I'm not here to convince anyone to vote for it or to vote against it, however, I do think it's my obligation to make sure that people understand how that will affect the city of Maumell's budget. This information was, came to us originally from the municipal league, but also through Metro Plan. And just for those in the audience that haven't seen this, the city of Maumell gets half cent turn back, or a portion of that, our portion that comes to the city is four hundred and seven, four hundred thousand and seven dollars. And so in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, that goes away. And for comparison, for those that don't know what four hundred thousand dollars means to the street budget, four hundred thousand dollars is, is how much we spend on overlays every year. And so that just gives you an, an understanding of the impact. A lot of cities have passed resolutions supporting it, I never brought one and the council never asked for one, so we didn't do that, but I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of, of how that would impact the city's budget. The next issue I want to talk about is early voting has started, and boy, oh, boy, have people been in line waiting to early vote. As somebody who doesn't like to early vote too soon, who knows what news is going to come out here at the last minute? I thank each and every one of you who really votes before me, because it means I get to go quicker. But there was a lot, there was an incredi, Philip said, Philip Rayburn, Parks and Rec Director, said it was the biggest line he's ever seen, seen out there. Part of that's probably because people are a little more social distanced and they're not letting as many people in the community center at once, but thank you everyone for voting. I wanted to give a little bit of an update on, Councilmember Mosley is here virtually, but the discussion has come up about the revenue office lines several times. We have come up with a plan, thanks to Liz's idea implemented by Sarah and actually done by Christie, where, and with the help of Scott, too, now that I think about, anyone else here to help on that? To, basically, people can check in on their phone and then go sit out in their car and get a text message when the time comes. We've used CARES Act money for that, and that'll also, we've got a tablet coming in, so if someone doesn't want to go sit out in their car or have their own smartphone, they can input their own information right there. It's pretty quick, simple, today it meant that there was actually no one sitting here in the council chambers, and so it seems to be working pretty good. We've also purchased a fogger, a sanitizing fogger, that we use in the common areas and the goal is to use that, you know, if there are crowds of people in here. We use that daily in the common areas to help keep people as safe as possible. I believe that concludes mayor's comments. City council comments. Councilmember Scott?
I think all of us received an email from a gentleman and his wife talking about bike traffic around the lake, and how his wife actually got clipped by someone going too fast on a bicycle. And there is a gentleman who rides really fast, but he goes out at like six o'clock in the morning, so there isn't much traffic there, but I did hear someone complain about him when I was out the other morning. Philip's signs are excellent, there's a lot of information in a tiny little area, it's very clear. The question that I had was, this gentleman who contacted us talked about motorized bicycles, and aren't motorized vehicles of any kind prohibited on the trails?
I don't have the code section in front of me, but the sign has always been no motorized vehicles on path system.
That's what I thought, so it's just a matter of trying to catch culprits and tell them no motorized vehicles.
We could, I once had a speeding ticket dismissed because the police officer had to speed to catch up for the speeder, but that's the difficulty with that.
Catching it, yeah.
Yeah, we'll make sure the chief of police is aware of that and has his folks looking out for.
And one of Philip's signs did get stolen, like the very first day, it was a shame. Yeah, the one over by the tunnel. Why, why would someone want to do that? I thought they did a really good job.
I did so proud of them.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Philip. Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I had a prepared text, four pages, to read a rebuttal to a statement that I came across in a next-door Maumell by one of my constituents who blatantly wrote a, a dissertation and accused me of not doing my job and what a poor council member I was. I spoke this afternoon with our city attorney regarding the specific situation, but the council doesn't want to read it, doesn't want to hear it, and I don't want to read it, so I've decided that the better case is to simply take the high road and not dignify the statement made by the gentleman. He is chronic and habitual in his hate for the council and the city of Maumell, so I just wanted to say that it's, 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 you, you can't get past the point where people want to, they want to do something to injure you, they want to do something to criticize you, and I think we've all been under that blanket once in a while, but I've decided that it's best just to go on and continue doing the job that I should do and want to do and I love to do, and let those people fall, take their, their place wherever they want to go with it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt, any additional council member comments?
I've got one.
Councilmember Mosley?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I wanted to comment on your system there for the Department of Motorized Vehicles. I came by today to get my packet, and I was totally impressed with how that is working. There were people out in the parking lot and sitting comfortably in their cars, and, and Krista's actually sitting at her desk doing her regular work there, and, and it was quiet around there, it appeared to be working very well, so that's a, that's a very good step in the right direction, that we could just get DMV to, to man that system themselves, I think that would be great. Maybe at some point they'll want to have Kristy go around and train all their officers on how to do that. But anyway, I just wanted to give my compliments to all those that worked on that. Also wanted to ask, where are we going to hold the budget sessions? I think we're due for a budget session on October twenty-seventh, if I'm correct.
Correct, Tuesday, and in the blue room.
In the blue room, okay. As far as safety, COVID and all that stuff, would it be, you think it'd be better to just hold it there in the council chambers where it's pretty big and we could be socially distanced? I haven't seen the blue room since it's been remodeled.
I, yeah, I don't necessarily, so, I don't necessarily think so, so the, the issue there versus here is we're, we're not all socially distanced here, which is why we have the masks on.
Right. Anyway, well, think about that, but I, I do want to say that that was a vast improvement here, that, that we don't have general public using as a waiting room day after day, so I, I think that is an improvement to the safety of the people that are sitting in a council room and, as well as everybody, so I do appreciate that, and I guess I'll see everybody on the twenty-seventh then.
Thank you. Just to follow up, I neglected to mention that I did reach out to the revenue office folks, and they said that they could assign someone to manage the lines, that person would be one of the people in that office, and so they said they think that that would slow things down pretty considerably, that if our staff was feeling overwhelmed to just prop that door open and point people in there and let the, the chaos ensue. It's not a direct quote, I assure you.
Thank you, sir.
I was just going to ask if you would mind sending out an email with those specific budget dates and times for us? I know you passed out a sheet previously, but I was just going to ask if you could email that as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Madam City Attorney?
No comment.
Madam City?
Here?
Yes?
Okay, this is Alderman Saunders. I don't have a, a hand raise option anymore on my phone, so on Zoom. Now, so far as the budget meetings, I haven't, I haven't been to a budget meeting so long because I lost my left lung and I can't be there in a mask. Now, I need, and I agree, we need, if you can email out a schedule, and if I don't have to sit for hours with a mask, I will be there. I've never missed it. But I need some kind of guidance on what's going to be required, because I can't wear a mask, I've got scars all over my body from falling past now, you know.
Mr. Mayor, could I talk on that?
Sure.
Perhaps, I, I, should, should perhaps we try the first budget meeting via Zoom? I'd be interested in anybody else's thoughts, if people were interested in that, I think that would, I'd be in favor of that, just to help, uh, can out and for safety, and I, I actually, we've got several relatives that we've got to be very, very, very careful, and that's why I'm not there tonight, we're going to see some later this week, and, and I just have to stay out of public places, and that may be a problem for me during some of these budget things, but if anybody else would be interested in Zoom, I'd, I'd be ready to do that.
I would tend to agree, we've, we've typically just had, if someone was unable to make it, they can call in, and that seems to have sufficed for the last number of years. Correct. Madam City Attorney?
I did just want to mention one possibility that we have permitted some people to use at the senior center. Of course, we accommodate people with disabilities under the Americans with Disabilities Act, and for, for a number of people, a face shield is an alternative that's less restrictive on your breathing, so Councilmember Saunders, I don't know if you have any interest at all in trying that, but I just wanted to mention it as an option.
Well, yes, as a matter of fact, I have thought about that, I have a face shield that's available, because I really feel bad about not being in the city council tonight. But I'm concerned about public perception, that sort of thing. I have no problem with a face shield, I can breathe with that, so I'm not sure it's my decision, it's almost a public decision as to whether I do that or not. I just can't wear that mask.
Thank you. My position has simply been that we, we have to adhere to the mandates of the state, and so if, if a face shield meets those mandates and all of that, then this is, you know, I'll let you make the decision on public perception and how you feel you'd be perceived with that, but.
Well, I'm not trying to be ugly, it's just that I can't wear a mask, I've fallen, I'm lucky I haven't had a brain tumor or a blood clot over it. I've got scars all over my arms from passing out, from the, from the mask, so I can't do it, I just can't do it. Now, I don't have a problem with a face shield, if everybody agrees, you know, but I'm not going to take it on myself just to walk in with a face shield and push it on everybody else. Public perception for a lot of people, perception is reality, it isn't for me, reality is reality for me, but for a lot of people, perception is reality. If they perceive that I'm cheating the system or whatever, then I'm setting a bad example for our city, and I don't want to do that.
Got you, are you asking council members if they have a problem with you wearing a face shield? Sounds like that's the question.
Yes, that's what, yeah, I would like to hear that, you know, if they don't have a problem with it, then at least I have some support, I'm not walking in there just pushing my idea on everybody else.
It seems like folks support you in that decision.
I do, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
Councilmember Saunders, I was just going to say, I've missed having you here, and I would love to see you through a face shield this coming Tuesday night, so, yeah, hey, there we go, we'll all, we're in support, no, I think that's great, we'd love to have you back if you're comfortable with that.
I will just mention, it is an accommodation. It is not a preferred method of face covering, but it is an permitted accommodation, but if you can wear a mask, I would encourage you to do that.
Hopefully opaque. Any additional city attorney comment? Madam City Clerk?
No, sir.
All right, that concludes the meeting, if and when I get a motion to adjourn. Got a motion to second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
All opposed, no. Motion carries, thank you very much.